Good afternoon and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Fallbrook Union Elementary School District. We're happy to have you here today. We have a full agenda and we're very excited about it. If we could start with our flag salute. Mrs. Lopez, would you like to lead us with the flag?
Sure.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we have 21 participants. That's very exciting. Thank you all for being here at our meeting today. The first part of our meeting is going to be devoted to the redistricting of the Fallbrook Union Elementary School District districts. And as many of you know, every decade, the census produces new numbers and then districts, both supervisory district, assembly districts, fire districts, and school districts must all adjust their boundaries so that each of the districts are fairly comparable. And so today we'll start by hearing from two of the experts working with our elementary school district, Janet Mueller and Susan Miller. Those are our attorneys and our demographers, and they will give you sort of an introduction to what we'll be talking about today. Turn it over to the starting Janet or Susan.
Hi, everybody. Susan is going to start us off and I think is going to screen share her PowerPoint materials. And Susan, you're still muted, so I'm gonna unmute.
Thank you. I always thought I would be like, over. You're muted. And I still am never over. You'd think after three years, I would be, okay. So this is an update to the meeting that we had last month. And so I'm just going to kind of give you an overview of where we are and where we're going. So as you all know, we had the presentation back in December, and you asked us to come back and give some different ideas about how we can rebalance ourselves. Keep in mind that this is not a redrawing of everything. What we're trying our best to do is actually just balance things out and keep everybody kind of in a, all the districts even population, as well as honor our protected areas. So what we're looking at is, we have the 2020 census information. We know that you had an overall variance of about 24.5%, which causes us to be out of compliance. So the concept is to get back into compliance and compliance is 10% or under, of course. And so that's what we are working with. Understanding where we are in terms of our population, we are looking at the Hispanic, white, black. These are just the different categories that we have from the census that takes us up to about 67,000 total population and voting age over is 55,000 people. So where we are right now is, this is the heat map. You saw this all before. The Hispanic citizen voting population is highlighted in terms of gradations of where they are located across the district. So the lighter the color, the lower the population level, and the darker the color, the greater the population in terms of the protected class. This is your current trustee areas. So you can see where trustee area 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, the current boundaries. And then as we move through the different scenarios, we'll keep the colors consistent so that you can see how the trustee areas are adjusted. And that way, you'll, you can sign it, see the nuances as we go through this. So as of right now, this is just the calculation for scenario one. What we tried to do is balance the population across all the trustee areas, pushing the variance below the 10% as well as preserving the Hispanic Latino minority majority in trustee area number three, which is that darker pink color. This one keeps all the trustees in your air, in their areas. And the Hispanic CVAP adjusts from about 53.9 down, down to about 52.3. But please keep in mind, Janet and I did go back and we looked at, at the time when you all did the initial district lines that were drawn. In area three, the population at that time was 52%. And so the 53.9% is reflective of the population, the 2015, 2019 census data that we had used at that time. And so that's why there's a little bit of a difference with the 53.9% as quote unquote the CVAP for area three versus the 52 at the time they were originally drawn. So when we look at scenario one, we can see that we take a bit of the trustee area number three and adjust it a little bit to the east to grab some of that population to balance out. And when we look at what that look does for us, you'll see that we stay at about 52.3, as I said, for CVAP, and we balance out at about 13,100 to 13,800 across the, across the different district areas. Does anybody have any questions about this one, this scenario?
Susan, if you don't mind, could you put your presentation in presentation mode?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Thank you.
We'll just be able to see the slides a little more clearly.
Hold on, let's see. There we go. Are you able to see that? Okay?
I think that's not, I think that's your mode.
Yeah, hold on.
I think it's the
The middle one that looks like the monitor.
It's fine?
Yep. So maybe, back out of it, maybe?
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, I think you need to go end your show.
Yeah. And then
Play from current slide? Yeah, it's funny. Yeah, she might have it on dual monitors.
I think I do have it on dual monitors.
Swap your display.
Yeah, so let's see if I can do that.
Display settings. In display settings, you can swap your
Susan, thank you. Perfect.
And then you can see your faces. How's that?
That's fantastic. Thank you, Susan.
Okay, sorry about that. You learned something new. Okay, so let's see where we are.
Susan, rather than stopping at various parts of the presentation, I think if you can go through it first.
Okay, that's great. All right.
Overall, and then point, do exactly what you're doing, but let's be able to see the whole perspective of the work.
And then we'll ask questions? Perfect. Okay, great. Okay, so now we're on to scenario number two. In this case, we're looking at keeping the variance once again below the 10%. And we have the Hispanic Latino minority majority trustee area number three, of course, keeping that, that whole. This one has the trustee moving from area five to area three and keeps area three in a more compact kind of boundary area. Once again, the trustee area CVAP adjusts a little bit to just above 52.7%. So still within the range of where it was when it was originally drawn a couple of years back. Okay, this is where the map, you can see a little bit more distinction. We have it compact here, and there's just a little bit pulled into the blue area. And in this case, you'll see across the board, the, the CVAP for the different district, you know, trustee areas, sorry, trustee area ones through trustee area five with a variance of about 8.4%. Then we also did a 2A, which was a bit of a tweaking of number two. In this case, what we did is we had a little bit more of the trustee area five moving into trustee area three, and it kept trustee area three as well more compact. But in this case, the CVAP went up. We increased it to 54.1%. So we were able to increase the CVAP to a higher level than the other scenarios that we have provided. And the variance is at 8.7% in this case. As you can see, we jetted out a little bit to the east. We captured a little bit of the trustee area number four. And then trustee area number one jets in a little bit to the trustee area number three, so that we can capture a little bit of the population and balance out and keep trustee area number one balanced with the others. And in this case, you can see, once again, the population across the different trustee areas, ranging from the low of about 12,006 up to a level of about 13,007 or 13,008, sorry, in trustee area number two. Okay, scenario number three. In this case, you'll notice that we have a overall variance adjust to 9.3%, so just under 10%. And in this case, the balancing out across all the trustee areas, we keep the Hispanic Latino minority majority again in trustee area number three. And in this case, the, the various incumbencies are status quo as they are currently. You can see that trustee area number two, I'm sorry, trustee area number one takes over a little bit of trustee area number three to balance out. And we adjust a bit of trustee area number three to move into trustee area number four to capture that certain, that population. In this case, the variance drops below the 52% that was initially set a few years back when you guys did the initial drawings of your trustee areas. But in this case, you know, you do have a variance of 9.3, and that's just below the 10% threshold as an option and consideration. And this is the comparison of all the four different scenarios. So you kind of have a snapshot of what we're looking at. The variance of 5.8 is scenario one, which is our, you know, the first one that we looked at, the lowest variance we have is scenario two at 5.4%. And then scenario 2A and three are both at 8.7%, but the CVAPs are different. For example, in scenario 2A, CVAP goes to 54.1% versus the adjustment with the scenario three, which takes it to 51%. And with that, I'll open it up to conversation, and Janet and I can address any questions you all might have.
What I'd like to do is first open this up to questions from board members. This is the first time we're seeing the new trustee area scenario 2A.
Correct.
So one of our board members, we may need to take a little bit of a closer look at that, but we've had the opportunity to study the other three scenarios.
I don't think scenario three up here is correct. I think it's a duplicate of two. You just got the wrong picture up there.
This one?
Number three. It should be a very
You're right. Yeah, let me, let me go back to that one then real quick, just so you can see it.
Yeah, there you go.
But yeah.
Can you go back to that page you were just on?
Sure.
And take a look, because for some reason I have different variances from the materials we had over the weekend. I had a 3.3 variance, it's 5.8. Did that change at all?
For number one? Our variance is 5.8.
But well, that was, oh, yeah. That was trustee area three. Oh, I see. It could have been overall. Pardon me. Go ahead.
I think two maybe, I think two may need correction. I think two, not two, may need correction. In the, in the summary, in the summary notes.
In the summary page? Okay, it's scenario two is 8.4%. So that, right there. Whoops, sorry.
It should be an eight.
8.4, yeah.
That should be an 8.4. 8.4. 2A is 8.7. 3 is 9, 3 is 9.3, correct? Okay.
What was one?
One is 5.8.
5.8.
Got it, okay.
My apologies. We were doing this at the end of the day this afternoon, trying to get it over to you. So I'll fix that so you can repost it on your website, on your docs.
So I had a question. As we went through these various scenarios, I would imagine that trustee area three was the area we were first focusing on to maintain the appropriate citizen voting age population percentages. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if I recall, when I was just looking at this over the weekend, the areas north and west of area three really don't afford any opportunities for picking up census tracts because the CVAP is so low. So really, it sounds like we were mostly looking at the area just a little southeast of trustee area three, and then a little bit southwest. Is that correct?
Well, you know, this, when you're looking at the census blocks, it's where we're trying, where we can capture population to balance us out. And you're correct, to the west, we are quite limited in terms of increasing the population. And really, what you're looking at is kind of a, the, I don't know if you want to call it the donut hole or this area right here, where you have the population to adjust and move with, as well as a bit to the east. So that's why we were able to grab a bit of the population here to increase the CVAP in 2A to a higher level. So we are limited. You are correct with what we can do on the west side, as well as even to the southeast, in terms of trying to kind of make it a rectangular space, if that's what you're seeking. If you want more clean lines.
For those in our audience, the reason the west, the yellow area, doesn't afford very much is that's Camp Pendleton. And that's the area of Camp Pendleton. They really don't have coverage. So that those who are listening in know why. Do we have any other questions?
So any of these scenarios would keep us in compliance?
Correct. Correct.
I'm, I'm curious about scenario 2A, which seems, seems beneficial, or seems like, you know, having that higher percentage, CVAP percentage would be good. But why that, that section of yellow was cut out when the total population in area three is still lower than the others?
We did that just to, just because we need, we're trying to increase the variance to a higher level than where it is right now, gives you a little bit of flexibility looking into the future in terms of, you know, readjustments potentially with what the growth rate is looking like and, and, and being able to, in some way, shape, or form, look forward for flexibility. That's all. That's nothing really, other than trying to kind of keep it balanced that way.
So the variance is the difference in the total population from one area to the next?
Correct. Correct. From the high to the low, the, what's in, you know, what is the comparison of the highest population versus the lowest population? And then what you want to be able to do is, you, you want it consistent. You take your total population divided by five, and that's your ideal trustee number, trustee size.
I just wanted noted that the hook that we see in the south part, there is, the question will also come up during the high school meetings as well.
Sorry, yeah.
It's you see it in all the maps there. It's a hook. It's not on scenario three. It's excluded in scenario three, but that area there is one big census tract. And that's the reason why it loops that way. And it contains I would say probably the largest mobile home park in Fallbrook. And would largely meet up with Latino families. But south of that mobile home park, I believe the Latino population is not as, as dense, it's not, it's not the same. So, but because of the mobile home park is in that census tract, it's a, it makes that funky loop right there, funky L right there. But
Do you want me to go back to the heat map? Would that be helpful?
That would be great. Yeah. So we can, I think that heat map really gives us a good good overview of what the community looks like there. You can, is it possible to zoom in?
I was just trying to figure that out if I could.
I, I think this map does a good job of showing where
Right there.
Right, right. I see according to population.
I'm sorry, sorry.
That looked the way it does.
I see. Yeah.
You have
Well, that's why it was cut out that way.
Yeah, and that was cut out on the, on the 2A is obvious on there as well.
Right. And yeah, exactly. So you can see that is very light in terms of Latino population versus to the east. We can pick up some census blocks to keep the variance, or to keep the CVAP at, or higher than where it is right now.
Ms. Lopez, any questions or thoughts or comments?
Not at this moment.
So will this be the time we can open it up for questions? Do we need to hear from, sorry?
Mr. Vella might have started to say something. Did you?
Oh. We, I would, I was just gonna finish by saying, I know we just recently went through this process here in, for the district not too long ago. So I think we've done quite a bit of the homework there to shape the districts the way we like to see them. But, you know, it's good to see the opportunity for the community to chime in and weigh in on the discussion as well. We hope in that more folks can speak up. Yeah.
There's been a significant population increase, which was interesting. We picked up a lot of population in trustee area one and trustee area four, I think this, yeah.
Yeah, your overall growth was over, you know, just over 12%. And so, you know, that, that allows us to have a little bit of space to move around some of the census blocks. But we are also limited where we can, you know, where we can go in terms of grabbing, as you mentioned earlier, to the west. There's not as much flexibility as there is a little bit to the east of area three. So we, we didn't do a whole redesign. You guys already did that a couple of years back. We're just tweaking in this case for this purpose.
Ms. Lieber, I know you're remote. I didn't want to overlook you. Do you have any questions at this point or comments?
No, I, I didn't really get a close look at 2A, but I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Miller, you'll be posting 2A, or we'll get 2A posted on our website.
Yes.
I know you just came up with that today.
Yeah, we sent it over just this afternoon. And I, I know that Janet, I think, was going to take a review. And I don't know Janet, if you were able to get it forwarded on, but it should be sent over at least by tomorrow morning. And I'll fix that last page of the scenarios, just to make sure that all the numbers jive the way they do in the presentation.
All right. With that, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Let me start first by saying that we want as much community input as we can have. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us today. In a perfect world, without COVID, we would all be sitting in the same room and maybe around a few big tables, as has been done in the past. But with the spread of, of that disease, we are being very, very, very cautious. And so we're going to try and replicate as much as possible the opportunity for the community to have a dialogue, either with Ms. Mueller, our attorney, Ms. Miller, demographer, any of the board members. So we're doing a number of things. One, we're suspending the typical three-minute maximum rule. As those of you know, who've been part of our meetings before, the rules, the protocol is that someone can either call in or raise their hand in this case, but they're limited to three minutes. That's not the case today. If someone would like to speak and you have more than one question, that's fine. Please ask those questions. If you need follow-up information, please ask for that as well. The way we will do that is Mr. Trench, who's our auntie guru, will be watching for your interest in speaking. There are a couple of ways you can do that. There's an opportunity, if you look at the bottom of your screen, to raise your hand. And Mr. Trench will note those who indicate an interest in speaking with raised hands. The old-fashioned, literally raising your hand will be watching the screen as well. I've certainly done that on occasion when I can't move fast enough and get to the avatar. So all you need to do is to raise your hand in one way or another. We'll call
I will clarify, we can't see them.
We can't see them?
The attendees, you can see. So they do have the digitally raised.
Sadly, we can't see you. You're right. Okay, so we are, we are, we are doing that little icon. And, well, let's start. I'm, I'm very anxious to hear what people have to say. Mr. Trench, who's the first person who's indicated an interest?
He had one, this is Tom Brew, which actually he also registered.
Submitted him, he submitted.
That's good. And let me just also mention, we usually start with written comments. As I understand from our clerk, there are no written comments.
There are no written comments.
I just wanted to make that. So yes, Mr. Brew, if you could start for us.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It means slight disadvantage. I see some of the maps have been tweaked in the last couple of hours. But I do want to point out that I, what I heard at the beginning was that, which was unusual in the redistricting world, that your top priority was to keep everybody in the same district. That's very unusual. What we really want to do here is conform to the Voting Rights Act and keep the population variances low. And so what I see here, I'm not saying it's all bad, but the, the variations have shot up. Looks like district three might need more population, which could lower that variance. And I see a couple of areas. It's hard for me to show you like this because you can't even see me. But in that little donut hole you were talking about earlier, that census block, as trustee Favela was saying, goes down Alturas Road, which is a very large trailer park there, and apartment buildings. And it goes around that donut hole you're referring to is a gated community. And so that's a different community of interest than what's surrounding it. So I would question if, if it's correct to include all that together. Might be able to improve the numbers a little bit by taking the district a little bit more east and, and perhaps removing that donut hole. I don't know. I don't have all those tools in front of me. Thank you. That was a comment.
I have a question. And maybe I just didn't hear it. Did, did, did we have someone say that the priority was to keep trustees in the district's area? And maybe I just didn't hear it, did, did, did we have someone say that the priority was to keep trustees in the district, I didn't hear that. What I, what I thought I heard was that the priority was to focus on our minority opportunity area, trustee area three. And do what we could to preserve and in fact strengthen the Hispanic citizen voting age population. Ms. Miller. Am I correct that that has been?
Yes, I just gave the, when I was giving one of the trustee area examples, I said, in that case, there, the trustees stayed. You know, in their own individual areas, but that was not a priority, it was just a comment about what that status was. So I apologize if there was confusion, that was not directed to us as a priority.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Brew. I'm so sorry, we don't have everybody's images, we'll have to talk about whether that's possible or not in the future. I'd really like it to be a little more interactive, who do we have, Mr. Trench is our next speaker? Stamos, we welcome your comments.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, let me apologize, I am. Almost down for the count with the bad cold, but I took some NyQuil and it perked me up a little bit for a little while, so forgive me if I have to mute myself if I start coughing. First of all, I just want to kind of piggyback on what Tom Brew said earlier. And when I looked at the maps when they first came out, I was concerned about the fact that the maps all seem to. Have indications of where the incumbents lived and, you know, we had such a concern about that when we did this three years ago, four years ago, that I was really surprised that it came out. That they were on the maps again, it was also the case in the high school, we brought it up with them as well. So I think as long as we keep moving forward with the idea that we're doing the best, the best mapping and tweaking of boundaries. For the community and how the incumbent residences fall within that. I think, I think we'll be okay, I don't think we're gonna have a problem with that, but I just wanna point out that we do not want to. Go backwards in our thinking along those lines, that's number one, number two. I had a concern about every one of the scenarios, the, the Latino district, the minority majority district. Was the lowest and, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong, it had the lowest population in each, in each of the maps. So there was room for growth, or there should be room for growth, if that is the case. As I look at some of these changes. And I, you know, I think that we worked very hard, even without the kind of resources that your demographers have available to them as a community, we worked very hard to look at. At neighborhoods, look at census blocks, look at populations and. Excuse me, and see that, and. Unless there were some drastic population changes in the downtown area. I don't see why it's necessary to make some of these major changes that I see. And I'm speaking specifically about this hook or donut hole or whatever people are calling. I'd, I'd like to know why in trustee, the scenario three, that, that hook has been eliminated from the Latino district. When that in fact has a pretty high Latino CBAP, so if there hasn't been any major. Demographic changes in that census block, then it should stay how we had originally envisioned that district. When we first went through this process. And. Let's see. I don't think there was a comment made by, I think it was whoever made the presentation earlier, that the. Rectangular lines or rectangular looking districts, I don't think it's possible in Fallbrook and I don't think that that should be something that we would look at. Obviously, we don't wanna gerrymander.
Right.
But I think that, given the, the kind of limitations that we have, where we have to move entire census blocks, it's not going to be possible. And I think as long as we're looking at this, whatever tweaking and adjustments that we're making. With the lens of fairness and openness and making sure that the Latino community, the majority Latino district is. Not only preserved, but strengthened, and for that reason, my last comment, which I have not had a chance to really look at, two A. I think it's two A. The one that has the, the one that has the little yellow, let's see if I can find it here. The one that has the yellow. Chunk taken out of it from the west side. I think that, again, I, I don't know what that population looks like, but if that doesn't have a, a major change. Then, you know, I, I think we need to keep it where it is. And not, not move boundaries around for number one, the sake of bound, of changing and, and certainly not move it, oh, yeah, there it is. And not move them around if they're not going to strengthen that, that downtown district. Going to 54% is obviously a strengthening, but I would wonder why. That little yellow chunk out of the kind of central part of scenario two. Why that would be moved out and then the inside of that hook is moved in. I'd like to see what the comparison is of the Latino population and CBAP is between those two, and I'm assuming that that square, that yellow square is one census block. And the inside of that donut hole, I think is two census blocks. So anyway, tho- those are my comments and, and I, I just want to just thank you Suzanne and, and the rest of the board for. Opening up this opportunity in the best way we can, even if it is through Zoom, to get public input. You know, we know that that's the number one factor that's going to make this process one that's, that's helpful and that will stand the test of time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stamos. I'm curious about that too, Ms. Miller, I don't know, I have this at my home computer, I should brought it, I don't know if you can pull up the census block. Where that chunk is in scenario two A, cuz I have that curiosity as well. In terms of both total population and the Hispanic C VAP, and the other question that. And it's a Stamos made me think of is the question of what's the total population, Hispanic population in scenario two A. You may have given that to us and I, and I didn't write it down, I have the Hispanic C VAP and the variance, but I don't have total population.
Well, two things, one is I don't have the census blocks on my, my computer, so I can try, I can get you that information. The population for two A, we'll go back to page fourteen. The. Total population is going to be in that area trustee. Number three, is that your question, I think, so 12,666 times the 71% versus the C VAP of 6,615 for the 54.1%. So which one would you like to have or both?
Both, please.
Okay. So for the total population. Is about 8,900, almost, almost 9,000, and then for C VAP. About 3,600.
I think I might have misspoke for a second, if I asked for total population in Hispanic community, what I was really looking for was the total population. In scenario two A in trustee area three. Because 89, you don't mean that 8,900 is, it's, that's, is that just the Hispanic population, is it not?
Correct, cuz it's total population in trustee area three is 12,666 in that scenario.
12,066.
666.
666, so that was the question.
Right, that's.
I know we're trying to get as close as we can to 13,505. And that's probably why we have a variance of 8.7, is that correct?
Correct. Because the variance is across, well, like I said before, the calculation is the largest district in terms of population compared to, contrast to the one that has the smallest population. Divided by what your goal is, which would be the 13,505.
Thanks.
Yep.
So I, I would like to ask if you wouldn't mind, if we could have. Two pieces of information, what is the information about the census block in that northwest part of trustee area three? That is now showing up in two A as part of area one. And then I think the other question that was raised was about the area at the southern end of trustee area three near Alturas Road. Ricardo, you're, Mr. Vela, you're very familiar with the mapping, would that be correct, that that's what we're looking at in that area that. Was down at the bottom and then filled in, in that particular scenario?
Yes, definitely, we can take a closer looks at that. I do wanna point out that on, on our website, we do have a tool where we can see census blocks.
Right.
And. See population and CBAP, we can, so that's live. And. So just looking at the area that's northwest, if we look at all those census blocks, we do see a very low CBAP within those census blocks there.
The area that's now yellow.
That's yellow in scenario two A.
Right there, in this area.
And. The south end of Alburas, it's 62% CBAP is still very high. So that tool is very good to be able to, you know, hone in on those specific blocks to see, and look at these numbers that can be considered.
For those who are sitting in on the meeting, just so you know, when Cooperative Strategies posted the three scenario maps. You did something wonderful, which is you have each of the three scenarios, you can click on the map itself. And that will get you to three other slides that are all static slides, very informative, but they're static. If you wanna zoom in on that scenario's map, you click in the piece, I think it's in gray below that, that says if you want a live interactive version, click on that. And that gets you to a Google map, which then allows you to go right into census tracked areas.
Correct.
And as Mr. Vela said, they're easy to see and very informative, really helps you get a flavor for. How much variance we have in areas that are actually adjacent to each other.
You see the difference from block to block, so the donut hole, as has been referred to, and see the difference, the drop in CBAP.
So, so, Ms. Vela, you're saying it's scenario two A where that area's been filled in, that has, you can see the CBAP for that?
Yes.
And it's higher, low?
It's, it's lower, it's, it's under 50% compared to the surrounding communities, which are over 50%, 60, 70%. Even, yeah.
And the area in the yellow cutout was also fairly low.
In the yellow cutout, the CBAP is very low, so it's, as we see in scenario two A, I mean, that, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, and it's surprising, I mean, we know the neighborhood there. But I guess it's a. That's what the data tells us, yeah.
So what we really have are four, at this point, four choices to look at and consider. And I think it's important to remember, we still have scenario one, two, and three, scenario two, if I'm not mistaken. Has the, the largest of the C VAPs, Hispanic C VAPs of the original three maps, that came in at 52.7%. And the variance there, if I'm not mistaken, is. Either five, 8.4.
8.4.
8.4, okay. So, let's remember too, that we have that, we really have four scenarios, and I wanna thank Cooperative Strategies for, I know how slammed you are with all the work that you are doing for all of your clients around the state. And really appreciate your working up to the wire today to try and do what you could to make that, see that number as strong as it could be, so thank you so much for.
And I, and I do wanna address the, the comment about, you know, trying to make these perfect rectangles and things like that, we, we just can't do it that way. You know, we, we do have to be honorable to what the census blocks, you know, tell us in terms of the population that's served in different districts and be cognizant of how. You know, how changing those census blocks, even just grabbing one or two. You know, can kind of change the shape, and so I wanted to honor her comment about, you know, we are not trying to make these perfect rectangles, what we're trying to do is. Take care that the population is honored, that's being served in those districts.
When I was doing some research over the weekend, I was looking at the federal legislation on redistricting and, and protecting minority opportunity areas. And they alluded to that specifically, cuz I think I too had the impression you're kind of have to make it look like it's cohesive. And in fact, the example they used was in Chicago to preserve a minority opportunity area, they had what they, it looked like an earmuff, you know, one big round area and then a little thing coming down and another big round area. And they said, the federal courts have, have really felt that that is appropriate when it's the area, so that was a good visual for me, cuz it really reminded me that we're looking at communities of interest.
Right.
Protect those.
Right.
And honor those. Go with that. Okay, Mr. Trench, do we have another speaker?
We have one more, it, it looks like Ms. Vela was saying, there's an additional comment. If she wants to unmute, she can.
Stamos?
Thank you, yeah, just in, in follow up, my question has to do with. So I, I went to, and thank you very much for explaining how to go into that one map and click on the census blocks, because that, that is very helpful. It was, it's almost like shooting in the dark when you're looking at a static map. But I think that there are at least two census blocks. To the east, immediately to the east of the southeast portion of the downtown district that could strengthen it. But my question really has to do with that little yellow block again, cuz I'm, I'm still very uncomfortable with having that. That hole, that donut hole. Tampered with as it is in three and two. Scenario three and scenario two, so I, I went to that little, what I think is that area where the, that yellow block is kind of. Encroached here on, on the downtown district, and it looks like there's more than one census block there, because when I clicked there, it was not that shape. So that's, my first question is, is that in fact the case, that it's more than one census block? And then the other question is, how much do we want to consider, and I think Mr. Vela said that, that it had a low CBAP. It does have a low CBAP, but it has a high Latino population. And it could be a matter of getting people registered to vote, or it could be a matter of people turning 18. Because it just seems like there's a whole lot of people in that area that are below 18 years old. And it, it almost seems like there, there might even be a. I don't know, I, I've not seen a district like that where half of the population is, is Latino and less than, what was it, something like 20 or 30% is, is over 18. So I'd just like to have the demographers take another look at that, at that yellow block.
Okay.
And then again, to look at those. Census blocks that are right immediately to the east and kind of south part of, of Fallbrook. Because we know that those have significant Latino populations, we knew that when we, we were doing this two years ago. We knew that when we, we were doing this two years ago, and there hasn't been a great shift in the demographics in downtown. So again, to, to move an area that we know has a lot of Latinos into an area that's not part of the downtown district, I think would be, would be a mistake. Thank you.
The next, we have one more, which is Ross L Pike.
Mr. Pike, we would be delighted to hear from you.
Hi, everybody, so the only, I only had a couple of quick comments. Just, I'm very concerned with, I understand that the trustees are saying that incumbents are not a priority, but I'm very concerned that they're even included in the maps. I understand of having, you know, a good continuity of service, but incumbent should have no place in this whatsoever, and I would recommend in all of the future drafts that they be removed from the maps entirely. The second point was just if there's a way to get that variation level down, that's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
In regards to the incumbency, we just by habit put them on the map. So that's just been our protocol for all of the work that we've been doing for all of the trustee redistricting. So it was not meant to be anything other than, that's just our format. So I, I can certainly honor that request if that's what the board would like us to do. But I just want to make sure that everybody understands it's not what the board told us to do to put the trustees on. It was just, that's what Cooperative Strategies does, is we look for where they live and incumbency and, or where they live and that term limits. So it's just a point of reference that we've put on all of our, all of our work.
I'd like to make a comment too, along those lines, because there's a lot of redistricting going on around California with all different kinds of agencies and offices and things, and school districts are a little bit different. There's no legal prohibition on the consideration of incumbency as a factor. For most districts, it is far from the most important factor or even a strong factor. But, but school districts are a little bit different than other entities that are redistricting right now. And so I have heard in a variety of these kinds of settings, a lot of concern expressed about the consideration of incumbency, and I just wanted to kind of, for, for everyone's ears, that we, that school districts don't have that prohibition. And so it is a factor, and how the board chooses to weigh the different factors that are all at play is really what kind of the tough job, I think, is that we need to do.
Thank you very much. I guess I have a question for, it could be for my colleagues on the board, it could be for those who are attending as participants today. Cooperative Strategies, I think you've done an outstanding job giving us a lot of different choices and taking into account many factors. As we said earlier, the key one of which is looking at trustee area three, our minority opportunity area. During minority areas, it's also been called, and, and doing what we plan to strengthen that area and build on what has been happening over the last few years with the new districts. I guess what I'm looking for, and, and my first question would be out for those who are sitting in as virtual participants, you now have the three maps that were made available before today, and then we're all looking at a fourth new map, scenario two A, which has, of all of them, the highest Hispanic CBAP. But the, in the maps we have now, knowing that two years ago, when there were eleven thousand seven hundred and forty-four residents in trustee area three, the community voting age population was fifty-two percent. And if we look at the three scenarios that we've had over the weekend, two of the three are at fifty-two percent, or actually higher than fifty-two percent, and the third is at fifty-one. And I guess I'd be curious as to whether folks want to provide us your input in terms of preferences for various scenarios now. I just want to state upfront that the redistricting map is going to be the choice of the board. But that's the responsibility that we've been given, and it will be a board decision. But input is, as I've said in this meeting before, input is really important to us and very welcome. So I think we've got all the people who've raised their hands so far. But if anyone else, or if someone who's already talked, would like to give us your read or your preference on all these maps, what you think benefits the community the most, I think we'd be interested in hearing that as well. And if not, you can always send it as a written comment. Tell if anybody's written, no, so if you're not raising your hand, that's okay. It looks like we're good on that. With that, any other comments from Mrs. Lieber, I know you're remote, my colleagues here in the room, any other questions? Okay, well, we have another meeting coming up in two weeks. That meeting will be at six PM rather than at four PM, and it will also be a regular meeting of the board. But agendas on that meeting will be similar to today, we will probably be looking at if there are new versions of the maps, we'll be looking at those, and maybe looking at these same maps as we work on deciding which direction we should head. So, thank you all for participating, thank you for being here. Mrs. Famos, I hope you go there, and to all of those who are here, thank you, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting when we do some of our business, but we are going to take a five-minute break. And then it's now two minutes after five, we'll reconvene at five ten. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, reports from the board. Mrs. Lieber, would you like to do your first report? Remote reporting. And you'll need to unmute there.
Yes, thank you, not a lot, I've been studying the maps. I did some volunteer work at Ballastito Unified, or Unified, I believe is the name, looking at their county-led volunteer program for reading, which I think is something that when all of this COVID subsides and people can go back into the classroom as volunteers, we as a school district might want to consider something along those lines. You know, just to continue to work on the great program you already have in place for one-on-one and small group reading support, and that's pretty much my report.
Thank you. Mr. Favela?
Sure, a couple of things, well, we have come back from the break. And it's been, I know it's been, I'm not sure, but I know it's been challenging, you know, we know that rate of, the spread of COVID has increased over the break, and so I know that's, that's put a quite a, quite a bit of stress on, on the district and students. I'm really glad to see that our district was able to offer rapid testing the day before we came back to school and has been offering testing throughout the week. A very critical resource that's available to our community. And I know why a lot of parents have been taking advantage of this as well. So I mean, it just really underlines how important the, the role our schools are playing in the moment in protecting public health. Some really, I'm proud of the work that our district is doing, Leonard and, and all the staff, all, all the folks that have been taking care of our kids and, and our staff, we want to say thank you to all of you. And on a different note, I do want to mention that softball registration is open for the spring. So now's a good time, softball, baseball, sports are picking up right now, so it's a good time to look at what's, what the community offers. Tomorrow, there will be a walk-in registration for Fallbrook Softball at Ingle at six thirty, and there will be a couple more, the season starts in February, so my parents have a, they have some time to get ready for that. And it's open to ages three to fourteen, right, through to fourteen. You do not have to have experience playing before, you know, we have rookies in every division, so welcome, welcome on.
Mr. Favela, where did you say that, a walk-in, or sign up?
At Ingle, Ingle Sports Park, up of Olive Hill, next to the high school.
I have a feeling one of these days, he's going to start to try to recruit. We need coaches, we need umpires. We know he's going to be looking at Susan. I have no hand-eye coordination, it'd be dangerous.
You have a junior umpire program. That doesn't get promoted enough, it's a good chance for, you know, those that know how to play ball, or it gives them a chance to earn some money as well.
Well, you know, I have to say, I'm so grateful that you do bring out all the sports that are available, because youth sports is such an important component in the mental health and the, the growth and the joy that kids have while they're going through school. So, you know, I really do appreciate that, I'm giving you a hard time, but it's really such a great thing. And I know that you volunteer as a coach, and so thank you for being an advocate and working with the kids.
No, but.
Mrs. Lopez?
Not a lot to report, because obviously the holidays came and went, and were lovely for, for my family. I definitely want to say thank you to the staff for being prepared for all this testing. And I know there were a lot of schools that were left behind, a lot of districts, not schools within our district, but districts that were left behind because they didn't plan ahead, and you guys did, so thank you very much for that. And did have the opportunity to help out at Live Oak and, and help with some of their testing, which was an experience in itself, but I enjoyed it thoroughly, and I was amazed at the number of positive results that we're getting, so we know how much those staff people are working. And absolutely thank you to Mr. Rodriguez and all of his, his staff for handling everything that they have handled. It's, it's been incredible for me to watch that. So I appreciate all the work you guys have done to help us be a little more prepared. A lot of, a lot of districts were not. Worse.
Yes, I was able to, my family and I were able to take advantage of the testing site at Maalas on Sunday. So thank you to Mr. Rodriguez and all the staff that made that happen, it was very reassuring, you know, after having family in from out of town and all the holidays to the snow, we were clean before school started. I was able, also able to help out at Live Oak on Friday during the contact tracing, and it, it really felt like we were on the front lines. I mean, I, I know someone in another office who said it feels like a war zone right now, I mean, it just was non-stop. But I'm so grateful for the rapid testing program there. I mean, I don't even know if we know how many hundreds of students who are still in school because they were able to be rapid tested and we didn't have to send them all home. So it's just, it's been an absolute game changer for our district. And our staff is just amazing, what they're, what they're having to deal with in the offices. I mean, the principal is just running around all day, finding kids, testing kids, it's, it's, there's, there's very little, you know, else that they can do right now. So I'm, I'm just in awe of our staff, and I'm grateful, and, and hopefully we're supporting them in every way possible. I think we are getting extra, there was a retired principal in there helping, there was extra staff, so it's all hands on deck. And today, we kicked off our fifth grade plantings with Fallbrook Land Conservancy and Sierra Forest at Montserrat Mountain Preserve. And it was a small miracle to get the kids there with everything else that was going on, it was a little chaotic. But it was really nice to have them out there, and I was really grateful to the teachers and all the admin that helped make sure, bus driver, everybody get all of the pieces that have to fall into place to make that happen. So we're looking forward to getting all of the schools out there, all the in-town schools and Mary Fay at some point in January. And I get to take the kids on a hike, that's the best part, after they be there planting, I get to take them up the mountain, show my favorite plants, and we look for birds, and so it's a lot of fun.
I just want to echo what my colleagues have all said. This has just been the most extraordinary three-year period in anyone's career in this building, in any of our school sites. And everybody's holding on by fingernails. And not anybody letting go. Thank you all, because I know this is so much harder than it's ever been before. And the kids, we're keeping our kids in the classrooms. Not everybody can say they're doing that, and we are, we're doing everything we can, and we're keeping them safe.
That's right.
So we're just very, very grateful to all of you for doing what you're doing every day, and sure, it's true up at night. And the kids are going to thank you, because it'll be, you know, another challenging year for them, but it won't be a lost year.
And with that, thank you so much, I so appreciate the comments and the recognition of our staff. And, you know, it's, we watch the news or read the paper, and we've been doing this now for, this is, you know, feels like ever. It's one of the things that is so amazing, we know, all this, all this time, we've been acknowledging and supporting the work that our staff is doing from our support staff, our classified staff, our teachers, our school leaders, our district office. And the poise and grace with which people are operating under such pressure is really phenomenal. And with the, we all are very clear about our why, and, and that is to keep our kids in school. You know, there's been some questions, we've had questions about, when, when would we flip to virtual instruction? And I just want to remind the board that, as you'll recall, the, the legislation really moved us in a direction to try to minimize the opportunity for virtual instruction. I can remember AB one thirty, and it moved us in a place where independent study is, and agreed upon independent study contract is what has to be in place for students who go to virtual instruction. So our virtual school is, every child in that school is on a, is on an independent study contract with their parent, it's, they agree to do that. And then any other child who wants to, you know, be, need for some whatever reason needs to be on an independent study contract, we do that. The legislation as it stands right now currently does not really provide the opportunity to just flip to virtual. People think you can just flip it. Now, what it does provide for though, is in emergency situations where we have a staffing shortage, we have provisions to be able to do that, and it's complicated in the way we have to deal with it. But right now, what we know is that there's a lot of discussion in Sacramento on creating a legislative fix for this. Because what would no one ever predicted, that we would be where we are right now, particularly with the staffing shortage because of this wave. So what we're all hoping is, as you said, you know, we're hanging on, and we're testing kids, and our parents have been phenomenal working with us, keeping their kids home when they are sick or have symptoms. And so we're as, we're all working together as a community to keep kids safe, keep kids at home if they're not feeling well. The work in our, from our HR department to providing and ensuring we have substitutes, you know, that's a day by day, every morning between seven and seven thirty, we're on the phone, how many subs, right? Generally speaking, we're doing okay there, a little, a little more challenging with our classified staff when classified staff are out, for example, a paraprofessional, how do we cover those if there isn't a, you know, there are not a lot of paraprofessional substitutes. So we sometimes will be using certificated substitutes in those positions, but generally speaking, we're day by day doing okay, we have a little over eleven hundred students absent today from school, which means that parents are keeping their kids home. So, all of that to be said, that this, we won't, our number one priority is to keep our students in school and do that safely, and we're able to do that right now. So I'm going to continue to send you a weekly update about how we're doing. And at any point that we felt like we need to go, we have to transition to a virtual model because we simply do not have the staff to do it, we will do that. But there's a whole other provision of things, rules and laws we have to follow in order to be able to do that. Our priority has always been is to keep our kids in school, and that continues to be our, the why we're doing what we're doing. So as you've mentioned, Mr. Leonard Rodriguez, we literally would not be able to do what we're doing right now if we're not from Mr. Leonard Rodriguez. And then our, our district nurses, and then our school principals, and our school assistant principals, and our counselors, and our classified staff and our teachers, it works all the way down. Leonard is the point person, we're all just, every day, we're like, what does Leonard need? What does Leonard need? And we are, we're so grateful, we're, we're really, really grateful. And to have someone of Leonard's caliber and his leadership and his grace, this guy just never cracks under pressure. Although maybe he does later, we just don't see him. But thank you so much for your acknowledgement of the work that we're doing and we're really proud of it. And we're keeping our kids in school and we're going to keep hanging on. We want to keep encouraging people, don't come, don't come to work sick, don't come to school sick, right? And let's all get vaccinated. Let's all get our boosters. Let's all wear our masks. Let's all continue to do the things we know that will keep our kids in school, which is what we've been doing since the start. And I'm really optimistic about it, but realistic about it. We can be optimistic and realistic at the same time about how hard this is. And we really, really appreciate your acknowledgement and recognition of that work. So thank you. And then the last thing I would say is, I so love the fact that we are actually doing the kinds of things that make school feel normal. Because here's what I know, when I'm out in, you know, the schools, we, we're feeling this frantic, you know, things that you've experienced with testing. When you go into our rooms, you see our amazing teachers working with our amazing kids, even if there's only twelve in there. School is going. And it is of, it's so important that our students, while they're, you know, when they're in school, they're getting better and then they come back, but school is going. And thanks to the great and phenomenal work of our teachers, we're able to keep doing what we're doing. So, so that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you. You bet.
She has her hand raised. I don't know if she has a question.
Karen, do you have your hand raised? No? Okay, it's still up there.
I was just giving an applause to. Sorry, I, I didn't mean it to be a hand raise. I just meant a thank you. Right. And my only option was raise my hand. So. I didn't want to interrupt you, but you know, it is unbelievable what you all are doing. And your, your leadership is brilliant. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Liber, so much. Thank you.
Okay, we have minutes from our December thirteenth meeting. I'm sure you've all had a chance to look through that. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All right, any comments, questions, changes? Okay, Mrs. Lopez, how do you vote?
I.
Hi.
Mrs. Libis? I.
I.
Okay, and I vote I as well. The minutes have been approved. Under human resources, we have, we have these four items for information.
Mrs. Lund, you missed one.
Go back one. Yes, of course.
Yeah, number two, number two, under board operations.
I don't, I must have an old version. I am so sorry. Okay, what am I missing?
Virtual meetings. You had to go back and add the virtual meetings.
I didn't bring, it's still the same. Okay, lesson learned. That means we need to approve the motion that we continue these meetings because they are necessary for safety reasons. Do I have?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Comments, questions? Okay, let's vote. Mrs. Libis? I. Mrs. Liber?
I.
Mrs. Ella?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
And I vote I as well. Human resources, we're there. Yeah? Okay, good. We have these four items for information purposes at our December board meeting. And now they are back for action. May I have a motion to approve the revised accounting specialist job description? Make a motion. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Liber. Any comments, questions? Hey, Mrs. Liber, your vote?
I.
Mrs. Libis? Hi. Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
And I vote I as well. We have an action item, revised lead mechanic job description. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Favela, your vote?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
Mrs. Liber?
I.
And I vote I as well. Third action item is to approve revised secretary free job description. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Okay, Mrs. Liber, would you like to start us?
I.
Mrs. Libis? Hi. And Mr. Favela?
Hi.
I.
Lastly, your revised secretary three bilingual job description. A motion to approve.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Favela. Comments, questions? Okay, vote Mrs. Liber.
I.
Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
Mrs. Libis? I. And I vote I as well.
You have one more.
All right. Actually, it's the next one. Yeah, that's our last one.
It, so, I'm sorry.
Does anybody have it from?
It's to approve a seven-point-two-five-hour new classified special ed program assistant position.
Thank you. See, our clerk arises. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve that.
A second. And. Thank you as well. And any comments or questions? For both, Mrs. Lopez?
I.
Hi.
Mrs. Libis? Libis? I. And Mrs. Liber?
I.
And I vote I as well. Okay, educational services, two information items?
Yes.
Okay.
Those were the only adjustments, Mrs. Lund.
Say again?
Those were the only adjustments. You bet.
Yeah, lesson learned. So the two items are workshop and conference attendance and Williams complaint second floor of the report. And thank you again to the staff for helping us enjoy and learn so much from our GSVA conference. Phenomenal experience. Consent agenda. We have a number of items on our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. I need a second.
A second.
Any comments, questions? Okay, let's have a vote. Mrs. Libis? Hi, Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
Mrs. Liber?
I.
And I vote I as well. Item eight, any future agenda items for consideration? This time. That gets us to the point where we will be going into closed session. Turn into closed session. It is now five. We are returning from closed session at six-twenty-two. There was no action taken. There was discussion only during our closed session. We are considering an action and the action would be that it is recommended that the governing board expel student number six-zero-zero-three-two through January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have anyone?
So moved.
I have a second.
A second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments, questions?
Should I say this is a very rare thing? It's the first time we've done that this, since I've been on the board and it's the last. I wish we didn't have to take this action. But it's, I trust our, our staff has done all our due diligence and this is the right course.
Okay, my great, staff has done an outstanding job. Working with the student, doing everything we could. So I think we're ready to take a vote. Mrs. Liber, I know you're connected to us via audio. Would you like to give the first vote?
Yes, I, I, I vote yes.
Okay, Mrs. Libis?
I.
Mr. Favela?
Hi.
Mrs. Lopez?
I.
And I vote I as well. The motion carries. With that, our meeting is adjourned. It is six-twenty-five PM. Thank you.